Good evening, it is now 6:30 and I will call to order the Monday, September 12th, 2016 Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, thank you for your attendance this evening, we appreciate your time. Staff, thank you very much. The first item on our agenda this evening is actually the adoption of this evening's agenda. Commissioners, are there any changes or emergency items for this evening's agenda? None from Commissioners? Any changes from staff?
Just a note, we have handed out a revised agenda and that's also been made available out on the table in front of the council chambers. Number one has been added, which is adoption of the agenda. And then in addition, although it does not show up on here, after item number four, you also have other business and then to adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Commissioners, with that said, I would stand for a motion.
Moved with the adjustments.
Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay and the agenda passes. The next item this evening is the review of the Burnsville Planning Commission minutes from the August 10th, 2016 meeting. Commissioners, do you have any changes or comments on the agenda from August 10th?
None.
None from Commissioners? Staff?
None from staff.
With that being said, I would stand for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay and the motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number three this evening, which is a public hearing. It is an application of the City of Burnsville to consider amendments to City Code Title 10 zoning, Chapters 4, Definition 7, General Provisions and 18, R-3D manufactured housing district to modify definitions, lot, yard performance standards, accessory structure standards related to manufactured homes and manufactured home parks. Our presenter this evening is Ms. Garros and she has already arrived at the podium, so we will turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Planning Commission members and we have members from the audience this evening. The public hearing is for a change to the zoning ordinance that by state law is under the purview of the Planning Commission to do that. We did include also another amendment which is related to Title III of the City Code, which is business regulations, and it relates to mobile home parks. And that is something generally the city council would just consider. It is not part of the zoning ordinance, it's separate from that. We included it here because both items will be going to the city council. But the public hearing is actually for the zoning changes that we will be going over. To begin with, in Burnsville, there are three manufactured home parks. They are located, there are two that are located on Burnsville Parkway. Arbor Vista is on the west side of Burnsville Parkway and these are both south of County Road 42. Ram Bush Estates is on the east side of Burnsville Parkway. And then there is also Sunny Acres, which is south of the Buck Hill Ski Area, adjacent to 35E. The manufactured home parks have been in the city for a number of years. Sunny Acres is the oldest manufactured home park, which was actually started in the late 1950s. The City of Burnsville was not incorporated until 1964. Later, in the late 60s and early 70s, conditional use permits were approved for both Arbor Vista and Ram Bush Estates' mobile home parks. There was also a 1972 rezoning in which a second phase for Sunny Acres was approved and that was also a special use permit at that particular time. So the information that we'll be going over this evening, the majority of the zoning ordinance standards that we have in place were first developed in 1965, shortly after the city was incorporated, and then amended in 1982 and then 1990. So it's been a good 45 some years since those standards have been updated and they date back, as I indicated, to 1990 for the zoning regulations. In terms of the three parks, they also operate under conditional use permits, which again have been approved by the council in the late 60s and early 70s. In addition to that conditional use permit approval, which outlines what the parameters are for development, setbacks, the types of things that can be built in the parks, how many manufactured home sites there are in the parks, et cetera. The different parks, some do have their own covenants, if you will, or regulations that also apply in addition to what the city's zoning is. In the last four years, as we've indicated to commission before, the city has undertaken code enforcement on an active process. It used to be a process where phoning complaints would come in and then they would be responded to and dealt with. The city council adopted, actually, and created a code enforcement division under community development and now active code enforcement takes place throughout the city. There are different inspectors and once every three years, the entire city is re-surveyed again. So it's an ongoing basis and it's an active process. With part of this, the manufactured home parks, we have been working with them on code enforcement for the last at least three years. And some of the issues that have come about have been related to the mobile home parks because they were approved so long ago. They were approved for setup for a different type of manufactured home than what people typically desire today. So the original sites, if you will, for the manufactured home park sites were smaller and they really related to being able to put a single wide manufactured home on the property and then there are also some additional provisions as well. Parking for manufactured home parks is different than it is in a regular R1, single-family zoning district. The parking takes place right off the street, it's about 20 feet deep, and it's right beside the, where the manufactured home is located. So we do not have a setback, if you will, between the back of this curb, the street, and where the parking begins and ends. So with that, there are a number of issues in trying to apply the 1990 regulations to current standards. Today, people desire larger, usually larger manufactured home units. There are double-wide units, a lot of times they're longer and wider, and when you put those units on the smaller pads or sites that were originally developed, there is less room to put things like a carport or a shed or some other type of accessory structure and still meet the separation requirements that are atypical for standard R1. But manufactured home parks in the state codes have separation standards, meaning that there is a specified separation that needs to be maintained between the units themselves and also between the units in parking, the units and the front, and then also the units back to back. So with that, in terms of the code enforcement, what has arisen is that there are a number of carports that have been constructed out in the various mobile home parks, generally not with building permits. And what has happened is that people want to have carports, but the way that the city's ordinance is set up for that R3D district, you can't actually put in a carport for most of the units because, again, these units are set much closer to the street than a standard 30-foot setback that would apply to a residential building, for example. So in meeting with the residents, I believe it's been about a year and a half or two years ago, we found out that people do want to have the ability to have a carport. Carports can be built anywhere within the city. They are allowed in our R1, single-family, R2 duplex zones. They do have to be manufactured of materials comparable to the house and they do need to meet setback requirements. What we did with the particular ordinance is we took a look at what is on file, the conditional use permits that were approved for each of the three manufactured home parks. We took a look at what some of the typical zoning issues were in terms of where we had setback or separation standards that were different than what was actually constructed out at the different parks. And we also took a look at the current manufactured home park statutes and rules of the state of Minnesota. And they define a lot of things that are in our current city code, which we are proposing to remove because there's no need to have these codes duplicated. And quite frankly, a lot of the codes in that Title III are already quite dated, those date back to the 1960s and the rules have been updated many times, so those are very old standards. So we are proposing to remove all the old standards and basically to, where the standards are already covered by a state statute or state rule, those will prevail. And then the ordinance that we have for all manufactured home park related items, all of the criteria, will now be under the R3D manufactured housing park district. So one location for all of the standards and then we are also proposing several tweaks in those standards to be reflective of the unique attributes that are associated with the manufactured home parks. The ordinance itself is before you, this is a red line ordinance. Copies of the red line ordinance and a letter explaining in general what the different provisions were have been mailed out to all of the residents that we had address information for in all three manufactured home parks and then also the owners of the manufactured home parks. So there were hundreds of these that were sent out. And what we tried to do is to identify just in front what the actions are that we are trying to modify the requirements to benefit the property owners, excuse me, the renters who want to have a carport or a shed or something and to allow that to happen, but within, as I said, the specific standards and setbacks that we'll be going over. One of the first things that we did is we created a definition for manufactured home site. And this is unique, again, for manufactured home parks. The sites are leased property. They don't have a specific legal description, they are not platted lots. In all of the other zoning districts and the way that the current ordinance is written, all of the setbacks and standards are written so that they're setbacks from property lines, platted or parcel lines. So what we did is we created a manufactured home site definition and what that relates to is the area that the tenant leases to be able to put their mobile home on or where their mobile home sits. So we did that. You'll see throughout the ordinance, we've also updated the language. Sometimes the older language referred to things as mobile home parks or manufactured home parks or, you know, all sorts of different things. The consistent terminology that's used through the state statutes and laws relates to manufactured home parks, so we've updated those. And then under the R3D zone specifically, you'll see that at the top, we changed manufactured home site, lot area, lot width and yard requirements to reflect instead of lot, but the home site area, which again relates to that property that's leased, if you will. Under the conditional uses, there is an addition to add manufactured home park. This is proposed because manufactured home park was listed under Title III as a special use permit. That was the language that was in effect at the time for the statutes. There are no longer, the statutes no longer refer to special use permits, they refer to conditional use permits. And in combining all the regulations to one area of the zoning ordinance, we added the manufactured home park here because we're recommending deleting the entire Title III The next part relates to the site and yard requirements. For all of the zoning districts, there is a comparable table that sets forth what the various setbacks are for the principal buildings, for accessory buildings and for parking. We have, again, changed lot to refer to the home site. Again, that's something unique to the R3D manufactured home parks. The setbacks that are identified are comparable to the separation standards that are found in the state statutes and rules. And we did amend, instead of providing setbacks, we took out accessory structure and instead inserted a shed for that. The, there are a number of the home sites where they have sheds and the current ordinance, when we look at a little bit later, under the general requirements for sheds, there is specific language for R1 and R2 and R1A zones regarding sheds. There's nothing, no standards for anything else. So what we did is we brought the shed in instead of a general accessory structure and indicated what the setbacks are, which again are consistent with the separation requirements in the state law. Title 1018-5, support and tie-down systems. This is something that's proposed to be removed from the zoning ordinance because it's covered already by state laws, so there's not a need to have duplicate language. 1018-6 is probably the majority of the changes that are proposed and this relates to performance standards in the manufactured home parks. And in that, we wanted to be specific here, again, relating the language to the manufactured home park as opposed to general. So we are proposing that each manufactured home site can have one shed in addition to the manufactured home, but there are certain standards that go along with that. These standards were taken from what the parks that do have regulations apply for their size and area requirements and we added them in here and they are proposed to be. You can have a shed permit, a zoning permit is required for something larger than 50 square feet. Shed shall not exceed 100 square feet in area. Maximum height is 12 feet. And the shed shall not be located closer to the road than the front of the manufactured home. I think that, as I indicated before, the setback for these manufactured homes over the years has changed, mostly because the units have gotten bigger and longer. So there are some manufactured homes that are very close to the street, there are some that are further setback. We had indicated that they not be located closer to the road than the front of the home. That is consistent with how we deal with accessory buildings in our R1 and R2 zoning districts. Item B, we specifically added language that each manufactured home site can have one carport and the sizes of the carport can be up to 440 square feet. This is the same size as someone could have for a garage, our minimum standard for a garage. It doesn't have to be that large, but it can be up to, up to that size. The setback for the manufactured homes, we're proposing to have a zero-foot setback from their private street. And the reason for that is, again, most of these manufactured homes are located much closer to the street than our 30-foot setback in our standard single-family zones. And with this, also because of the way that the manufactured home sites were originally set up to be developed, the parking was right there, it's right off the street, it's about 20 feet deep and the, therefore, the structure itself needs to be able to be close to the street to cover the vehicles. So we made that clear. For the streets, there are some sections in here where we just clarified the language to be consistent with what we apply, but basically streets need to be surfaced with Batuminus, approved by the city, and that language has always been there. It applies to other single-family and other zoning districts as well. There's a buffer yard standard, which is proposed item D, and this has been in effect since 1990. And this is basically what provides for that structures will not be located closer to public roads than 30 feet. The 30 feet is our single-family standard setback for principal buildings, both front and rear yard. So the buffer yard is that 30-foot area and that will remain basically open space, can be used for landscaping, those types of things, but not to include buildings. For garbage and construction materials, we're proposing a minor change to that so that this reads the exact same way that the similar provisions read under our general performance standards for all zoning districts. We're proposing to take out the storm shelter or evacuation plan. Again, that is something that's required by state law, so there's not a need to continue to have that in the city's ordinance. In addition to that, the other changes are very minor relating to just changing mobile to manufactured, except for item J. What is proposed there is, in the reviews and the work that we've done with code enforcement, in some of the parks, they've indicated a desire to possibly have additional storage areas that are available for the residents of the park to store, you know, larger things over time. Some of the parks do have those currently. What we've done is added this provision, making sure that the parks could do this, and indicated the same standards that apply generally throughout the city for screening, they need to have the hard surface and then also have obstruction of view, you know, from the perimeter of the property lines. The other area of the zoning ordinance that we're proposing to be modified is the general provisions section. And specifically in that, we needed to add a couple of things to accept the manufactured home parks from the general standards or to identify that you need to check in the R3D zone because they're particular standards that relate to that district. Number one is under item F. This talks about no accessory structures, except detached garages and flagpoles can be located front of the principal structure. We're indicating that an accessory structure or detached garages in the R3D district are exempt from this particular standard, but they do follow the standards that we've already proposed and gone over earlier. And the next one is related to carports. Again, carports are allowed generally throughout the city, but in the R3D zone, the setback is proposed to have a setback of zero feet as opposed to the other. So that's, there are specific conditions for the carports related to the R3D district, so we wanted to call that out. And the last item starts at the bottom of the page and that is repealing entire Chapter 12. This is under the business regulations. And again, we have either incorporated the appropriate language into the zoning ordinance or for the majority of those provisions, they're dated and they're already covered by state law, so they are proposed to be deleted. And with that, the recommendation from staff, we're recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to the city council. And I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros, I appreciate your time. Commissioners, questions for staff? Who would like to start? Commissioner Workman.
Thank you, Deb, for your presentation and thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of questions, Deb. Do these parks operate under homeowners associations similar to townhomes or are they under guidelines from the park management on what they can and cannot do?
Some do, yes.
Okay, so does anything here do we know conflict with what they've said they want?
We've tried to make the provisions consistent so the people can do what they've asked to do. We haven't gone through specifically and we don't, we don't do that for private covenants either. What the ordinance is, is related to the objectives of the comprehensive plan and what the city wants to have identified, private covenants or something above and beyond that are done by the private owner and applicable in that respect, so.
Okay. With regards to the shed setbacks, is there an inventory of what would be, I don't know the best way to say this, are there sheds that are abutting the street now that are going to be affected by this ordinance change with that 15-foot setback? I mean, are people going to have to move their sheds if this is passed?
There may be. Most of them are, that won't be an issue, but there may be a couple or they may have more sheds. The point is though, if they didn't receive a building permit, they're not there legally.
Okay.
So it would be a point of checking, if they received a building permit and everything's fine, then they can keep them, they're legal, non-conforming, but if there's no building permit on record for it, yeah, some may need to bring them into compliance.
Okay. And then my last question, is there going to be any setback requirements to those buffer yards? So you've got the buffer yard of 30 feet, but is there setback requirements on how close you can be to that buffer yard?
No. The buffer yard is just the 30-foot, it's been that way since 1990 and you could build, you know, if their plan that was approved with their conditional use permit showed the home site being right up to that 30-foot setback, then you could build to there. So this is, it's basically, the buffer yard is not changing, we just modified the definition of it for the manufactured home park, so, but yes, you could build right up to it.
And I'm just going to quick bounce back to my previous question about those sheds. And we said that we're not allowing multiple carports per manufactured home site. Are there instances now where there are multiple carports on a manufactured home site that would be affected by this?
Not that I know of. I believe the ones that are out there, there's just one carport per lot. And again, they are subject to separation standards through the state of Minnesota, so you really, you'd have a difficult time putting more than one on these sites.
Okay. So it's not the Wild West out there? I mean, there is some structure, we're just kind of reiterating it through these ordinance changes?
Yes, we're actually, we're making something available to the manufactured home parks that they couldn't do previously because they wouldn't have met setbacks.
Okay.
So now, there's no question with the changes that we proposed, that you can come in for a building permit or the appropriate permit for either a carport and/or a shed, you know, depending on what they want to do. And they will be able to do that, we will be able to issue permits, maybe be zoning permit or building permits, because now we'll be referring to the home site as opposed to a physical lot, which doesn't exist for these units, so.
Okay.
Trying to, trying to make things better for the owners so that they can, the ones that have them can keep them and other ones, other tenants will be able to construct them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioners, Commissioner Singh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, a couple of questions, more for clarification. The first one is, a family with a home, manufactured home, as their families grow, they tend to extend the home to accommodate their families. Would there be homes in our manufactured parks that cannot accommodate a carport and/or a shed?
There may be, yeah, depending on how the plot was originally laid out, yeah, there may be some that don't have enough room to do that. However, it won't be a city's zoning it won't be a city's zoning regulation that precludes that. It's based on the separation standards of the state of Minnesota, uh, and what's existing. Codes change over time, uh, and they, they certainly have. So there, there may be some cases, but the vast majority should be able to, uh, to have a carport.
Thank you for that. For the sheds, um, um, any new shed to be constructed needs a permit?
Yes. Either it needs a zoning permit, um, or if it's over two hundred square feet, it needs a building permit.
Thank you. And my, I think my final one for now would be trash. I'm not sure, um, how trash disposal is taken care of in the park. Um, if a, a family wants to have trashcans out, of course, they have to, um, screen them. That's right?
Yes. Um, usually, I believe they are typically located behind the manufactured home. Uh, yes. That's, uh, that's generally how, how that's occurred, except, of course, on collection days, and they can bring those out, just like anyone else.
Thank you. That's for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Benke.
Thank you. Um, Deb, um, okay, so we have R three D, which essentially is a multifamily, um, zoning.
Manufactured home park. Single-family, um, units, but yes.
True. But we're, we're treating it, we're, we're attempting to treat it like a multifamily, essentially. Um, we have higher densities than single-family. We're, we're basically operating in a, in a mode where we've got a much denser neighborhood than a single-family would be.
Yes.
You talked a little bit about the replacement of the structures as they age. Um, in a single-family development, somebody might tear down a house and put up a new one, and put up a bigger one because they want more space. That same thing seems to be happening here. Um, are we able to limit that, or is it limited by the state setback standards?
It's really, um, it's pretty much limited by the state separation standards. Um, now some of the home sites are bigger than others. Some of the home sites still have the smaller manufactured home on there. So really, it's just a matter of if you can meet the separation standard, um, then you can bring those in, so.
But as you move forward and trying to update the, the units, you have to keep in mind that if you want parking, you have to leave room for parking, and if you want a shed, you have to leave room for sheds.
Yes.
So if those structures are already filling up the lot, we're not trying to, um, shoehorn in a parking spot.
Correct. Um, the state, um, rules and laws do require them to have X amount of parking area within X distance or separation from the manufactured home. So, um, yeah, if things start getting bigger, not everyone will be able to have, have a larger unit, um, on their, on their site.
Right. And then parking, not all the lots have parking on the lot. They are down the street?
No, I believe the majority do have them on the lot. There are some lots that are landlocked, I guess, for lack of a, a better way to explain it. Um, and there are some, uh, general parking areas that are available, uh, within the parks. But for the most part, um, people are able to park, um, right on the unit lot.
Right. Um, you talked a little bit about the buffer yard that was brought up by Commissioner Workman, and, you know, you called it a build-two line. It, it's essentially, uh, what would, in a multifamily or a single-family development, it would be a thirty-foot setback from the street. That's essentially what the buffer yard is here. It operates similarly?
It's, yes. Um, however, what also comes into play are, is the, um, the plan that is on file with the conditional use permits.
Right.
So, yeah, in some cases, the units are up to or close to that line, and others, uh, they're, they're further away than the thirty feet.
So, and I guess that was something I wasn't aware of. So, no, so there is actually a physical plan that, that demonstrates where the building site is?
Yes, but it's not legally described.
Right, but it does, it still, even though it might not be legally described, it still feels like it's an exercise in geometry, that you have a certain-sized building, you have certain setbacks, you can only go so far. So, I mean, there are limits to what these parks can hold. There are limits in terms of where, where buildings can go. If somebody wanted to add on, they couldn't add closer to that thirty-foot line if they happened to come up to the buffer as a, a single-family residence could?
Um, no, I don't believe so. Unless the park were to come in, um, to do some type of an amendment to their conditional use permit or a variance or something of that sort.
Um, I, I'm struggling with the zero setback for park, for the carport. I understand it's a driveway. I understand that having a driveway with zero setback might be, um, work well. The issue I have is that typically structures, uh, a roof, for example, uh, an eve of a roof might be allowed to encroach beyond the setback. Uh, in this case, there is no room for encroachment, but there's no language here that talks about, uh, whether or not an eve can, can extend beyond the edge of the structure into the setback. Um, quite honestly, I'm having trouble with structure being right up against the back of the curb. Now, I realize it's a private drive. I realize it's a private facility, and all I'm suggesting is, while there may be some that are there, wouldn't we want to, um, allow them as legal non-conforming, but establish a two-foot or three-foot setback to a structure to allow room for, uh, vehicles, um, emergency vehicles, other movement issues like that?
Um, the parking spaces are already there, so they can't encroach, you know, they can't go over that. That's what the parking spaces are.
Sure.
Um, the, the-
Wouldn't the parking space be just the same as a driveway, though? In which case, you know, like in a townhome project, you can park, and you're parked from behind the curb to the garage, which typically is twenty-two feet.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the, the car being there, I don't see a problem with. The problem I have is the structure, the physical structure of the carport being at the edge of the street.
The cars are pretty much at the edge of the street.
Sure.
Um, and we think that, uh, it's a good thing, um, for people to be able to have something to, um, help them in the wintertime with snow and, and et cetera. This is something that, uh, is already existing out there. We did, uh, discuss, should we establish a five-foot setback, a three-foot setback, a whatever setback, uh, and came up with, in the end, um, it's really up to, uh, the individual, and this allows them to have something. It doesn't mandate that they do, uh, but it allows that they do. And the existing ones that are out there, they have not had issues with.
I guess I'd like to see language that, uh, does not allow any eaves or other overhanging structure beyond the zero-foot setback.
Certainly, we can do that.
Um, also, um, y- you had, uh, under your ten eighteen dash five manufactured home site, uh, and yard requirements, you lined through accessory structures and inserted shed.
Yes.
Wouldn't there be a need for accessory structure setbacks elsewhere, then?
The-
I, I missed that part when you were going through it. I mean, you took it out here, but isn't there accessory structure somewhere else, then?
There are, but they are only allowed in the R one and R one A zones.
Okay, but I thought you had accessory structure elsewhere in, in these documents referred to.
It's under, yep, it's on page six. Is the first one.
Correct.
Yep.
So in here, your accessory structures are exempt from, from the standards of?
The general standards of the district.
Correct.
And that, if you go back to the top of the page under item C, the standards that we have are applicable to the R one zone-
Yep.
And the R one A zone.
Right.
The R three D, the manufactured home park, is a whole different animal.
Right, but here you have accessory structures as exempt, and then when you go to assess, when you go to the, the manufactured, except under the R three D, but then when you go to R three D, there's no stand, there's no setback requirements for accessory structures?
The, we're not saying accessory structures can be in, you can have a carport specifically. You can have a shed specifically.
Okay.
The other types that, of, um, accessory structures that are listed in the ordinance that are allowed in other zones, um, we did not include. We specifically excluded them because these manufactured home sites are so small.
Right.
Um, because basically, what people indicated is, they want to have a shed, they want to have a carport.
Okay, but then I don't think, we, under F one, I think we have to eliminate accessory structures and then put a two and say a structure, other accessory, other types of accessory structures are not allowed?
No, um, that's not correct.
Okay.
Because what F one is doing is, that is just saying that for an accessory structure in the R three D district, you need to go through that R three D district. The only type of accessory structure that's allowed is a canopy, the one canopy, and the one shed.
Uh, under eighteen, ten eighteen six B. Okay. I guess, I guess I'm still confused because it talks about accessory structures in F one, but it doesn't talk about them specifically in B, in ten eighteen six B.
The only ones you can have are a shed and a carport.
Okay.
Those are accessory structures.
Each manufactured home may have one carport. Shouldn't it then say no other accessory structures are allowed?
We can say that. We thought it was clear the way it is, but we can certainly add that if that's something the commission so desires.
Well, I mean, under, under R one, does it define other, what other accessory structures there are?
Yes, it does.
And includes swimming pools, sport courts?
Gazebo's.
Yeah.
Yep.
Gazebo's.
Pool houses, swimming pools.
Right.
Trampolines, yes.
Right, one. Okay, I'm thinking that we should be specific then in, um, in comment that the other accessory uses described in, and, and there, there's no one, there's, but there's no one spot here where they're listed. So it's, it's under, what is that?
You can have these multiple accessory structures in the R one, in the R one A zone.
Right.
And then there are specific size and number standards that go along with that. What we wanted to do is in the R three D zone to say-
Right.
You can have one shed-
Right.
At these dimensions-
Right.
Which are consistent with what the park standards are.
Right, and I guess to me, it's confusing in reading it because it refers to accessory here, but then when you get to, um-
A shed is an accessory building by building code, so.
Right. And, but it, but the other types, I, I think it leaves it open to misunderstanding.
I think we should leave that to the commission.
I, I agree.
As to how you would like to-
We've got, so far-
You're right.
So far, Commissioner Benke, we've got two things. I thought we'd try to get back to them. I'll let everybody else-
I agree.
Bring up things, and then we'll, we'll circle back to those. Cause right now I have-
I agree.
Your question about the, um, zero setback and the eaves.
Correct.
And I, we need to have a discussion about where that's going to go.
Agreed.
And then I'll, also, I have the, uh, other accessory uses defined, so, uh, we'll, 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 we'll put those here on the parking lot, so to speak, and we'll get back to those.
Agreed. Um, then, it, is there a size in R three D of, in off-street parking, or is it defined by the city standard?
It's defined through the state codes.
So this is a manufactured housing state code size, okay. Um. I think I'm-
Right now?
Through for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Um, other commissioners' comments. Commissioner Levitt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, are there some structures, carports and whatever, there now that do not meet what we're proposing, or do not meet the state standards and would have to be changed accordingly?
The carports and buildings that don't have a building permit, we don't know. Um, we don't know. That's why we're stating, if you want these, you can have them, but you do need to meet the applicable permit requirements. From the information we have, uh, from working with our code enforcement people as to what the specific, um, zoning violations were, we took that information along with what the parks apply, um, themselves, and came up with, uh, the language and the standards that we're proposing. So they will, in our estimation, provide the most opportunity for folks to have their sheds and a carport, um, where they really don't have any opportunity to do that now.
So if a shed or a carport was built without a permit?
It's illegal.
And what's the process? What happens then?
Then there's probably a code enforcement action, uh, that will go with that. They'll have an opportunity, they'll be notified, have an opportunity to bring it into compliance, uh, submit the appropriate, uh, permits, and, uh, bring it into compliance. Otherwise, they'll need to remove it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Levitt? Commissioner Walter?
Yeah, just one. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, one simple question. I was trying to count up on the maps. How, how many total housing units are we talking about here, between the three communities?
There's several hundred, probably more than three hundred.
Okay.
I don't have the specific number for you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Benke, uh, other questions? Otherwise, I think we'll get to the public hearing and see what comes up, and then we'll get back to this.
Right. I did find one other element here. Um, again, the covenants versus ordinance, if we adopt an ordinance that's stricter than the covenants, is it their responsibility to bring their covenant into compliance, or they just have to follow the ordinance?
Their covenants can be whatever they want to be. Um, they have to follow the ordinance.
Sure.
Minimum standards.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. This is a public hearing, and at this point, I would like to open the public hearing and invite anyone in the audience that would like to come up to the podium and speak to this issue. Um, please come up, uh, give us your name and your address for the record. Anyone?
I have a question.
Ma'am, I, I, if you, I'd like to have you come up and, to the podium and, and give us your name and, and address for the record. And, uh, certainly, um, give us your thoughts or, or ask your question. Thanks for coming this evening.
Sure. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm Mary Jobraon. I live at two eight six Burnsville Circle, and that's in Sunny Agrus.
Thank you.
And I, I wanted to get more clarification on the, if you build a carport. Um, now, in my particular place where I live, there's, I have a double car driveway, and then there's a sidewalk, and then the street. So if that was to go in compliance with the codes, say the, the frame goes in the, uh, parking area, actually, and doesn't extend into the sidewalk, of course, would that be something that can be done?
We, um, we have not addressed a sidewalk. The ordinance right now just says to the road. Um, we can put in that it needs to be to either the road or sidewalk, whichever one is closest, so that it doesn't go over the sidewalk.
Sure, it can't do that. I understand that. Now, when they plow, they plow on the street. They stay within the curb, and we're more or less, you know, if you want to clear your sidewalk, of course, and some of the snow does come up on the sidewalk. But if you're, if you're in, within that driveway, then, and you're not interfering with anything beyond that, it should be okay.
Yes.
Okay. And my shed, I had that built eleven years ago, and that's actually in back of my home. And I had that, uh, uh, put out with string and everything for the manager to look at. And I did come here and I got the permit, and when it was completed, the man came out from the city here and looked at it, and it was okay. So I, you know, and it is painted to match the sign of the home.
Well, ma'am, in, in that case, you know, you have a, you have a permit, and even if we change the code-
Okay.
Um, y- y- you, your building is just a non-conforming structure, but it's legal because you have a permit. As, as, as code changes over time, if it was approved at one time, it's still approved today, even though the, the zoning changes. If you were to want to tear it down, or want to double the size, or make some dramatic changes to it, then it would require a new permit and some other, but-
Sure.
The building as it sits today with a, with a permit, uh, would, would, uh, could, could stay.
Okay. And I have another question, if you don't mind. The tie-downs, they were mentioned in the paperwork. Now, when I- Now, when I had my home built 11 years ago, I had the, what was, I guess, legal at that time. Now, I, I've been told that there's some different kinds of tie-downs or something implanted into the ground. Is that correct?
For that, that would be a question I'd need to direct you to our, to our building official. There may well be, I mean, just, there's advances in, you know, technology. This would not require you to change what tie-downs you have.
So what was in place then would be okay now?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. Mary Jo, thank you for coming and giving us your thoughts. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to come up and ask a question? Please give us your name and, and your address for the record.
Just a comment, Donna Jensen, I'm at 13613 Vincent Circle, but I'm the manager at Ram Bush Estates. I just wanted you guys to know that I got the letter today in the mail for this meeting tonight, so, just an FYI for you. I understand it was typed on the 6th, it was postmarked on the envelope of the 9th, but the mail carrier handed it to me today. So it just happened to be my luck that my mail happened to come in to me and I didn't have my sub that put it somewhere else for me to know about this meeting today, so I thought you guys should know that. I think a lot of it was delivered today from what I was hearing outside, too. So, just an FYI for you guys on that point.
The city is not required to send out letters. We're required for a zoning amendment to publish in the local paper twice. That's what the statute requires. We did send the letters out with these above and beyond, trying to let people know that we are trying to address their concerns. So they received them before, before the meeting. There's also, depending on what happens, if the planning commission decides to move this forward, then this item will go to the city council at their meeting next week on Tuesday.
Anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and commissioners, your pleasure. Who would, any additional comments from commissioners? We'll, we'll get to the stated items that Commissioner Benkey has brought up. Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I would like to commend staff for taking the time to update the ordinance for the manufactured home parks. What their staff is doing is responding to the needs of the residents of these parks. For example, carports, sheds, residents want them, and there was no provision for them. Of course, you had to get a permit if you wanted to build a shed. I think what, what we're doing here is to, is responding to the needs of the manufactured home park communities and putting in, writing in the ordinance, the requirements for obtaining these structures. So I would like to commend staff and commend the residents who have come out tonight to listen and to give us their input.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I intend to vote in favor.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Workman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deb, I have a quick follow-up question. On these carports that are existing as they sit right now, since they weren't allowed when they were built, from what I'm understanding.
Commissioner, I mean, if they were, in some cases they might have been permitted, in some cases they might.
That's kind of where I'm going, is, so were there permits pulled for these carports? I mean, I can't probably sweep every single one, but the people that do have them, did they have to come in and apply for a permit to build those carports?
I don't believe that there are some because you couldn't meet the setback standard to have them. What's happened, there have been some, a number of them that have been put up throughout the various parks. There have been issues, also where there have been various things, decks and awnings, roofs that have been attached to the manufactured home without permits. You can't, you just can't do that and maintain the integrity of the manufactured home. So what we have done with these is as long as the carport follows the, their standard, the engineering standard for manufacturer, then they can come in and they will be able to get a permit for them now with the setback.
So with that, they'll have to meet certain building code requirements by the city engineer? I mean, they're going to go out and inspect each carport to make sure that they're durable and.
It's not the city's responsibility to make sure that's done. It's the applicant's responsibility to provide that information with their permit. And usually what they're able to do is to see on the carport or the manufactured home unit, whatever it is, to get the code information for who manufactured it, and they have been able to find, in a lot of cases, the information, the supporting documentation for that that's been submitted with the permit.
So it's the oversight of the, the park itself to make sure that those carports are up to a certain standard or a certain building code standard?
Yes, it would ultimately be the park themselves because they are the property owners.
And so if they're not up to any type of building code, is the city going to enforce that, or is the park going to enforce that?
The city will enforce the zoning ordinance. So the city will enforce that. We would like the park to take the proactive stance and deal with these. Some managers are better than others, and in working through this, that is our hope that we will be able to resolve these and the park owners will, will take their responsibility because it is ultimately their property.
So in an ideal world, we'll have people at the door with applications for permit for their carports?
Yep. And then what they would submit is a drawing showing their, showing the boundaries of the property they leased, then where the carport will be, who manufactured it, would be supplied with the permit information along with the specifications for that, and then that would be reviewed by the building official.
But there will, the building official will not be going to the site to verify code?
They will do, yes, they will do an inspection, but it's not the city's responsibility to make sure that those structures are constructed per the manufacturer. That's the manufacturer's responsibility.
Okay. I guess what I'm trying to get at is if there are people that have carports and they were maybe not built to a certain standard that the city has, are they going to be put into a scenario where they have to tear that carport down and rebuild it to a different standard?
The standards for carports are not the city's. Those are state and federal codes or manufactured codes. So the city, what we look at is what's in the state building code and fire code, and we apply those. You get a permit, they submit it. Their contractors and people submitting it are stating that they are qualified. They're providing the documentation that, yes, this is the manufacturer and these are the specifications for, say, like wind loads, snow load, et cetera. And then once that is all reviewed, then there's an inspection to make sure that it is, you know, set where it's proposed to be set, and that's what's included. Now, if they don't or cannot provide that information, yeah, they may need to have to remove it. But we believe in going out and looking at the sites and working through this, that the majority of these can be handled through just providing the information because there are not that many manufacturers.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioners, any other comments? Okay, Commissioner Benkey. You, you have the floor first.
Very good, thank you, Chair. Okay. I think I'm looking again at our, our chart, Deb, on 10-18-5. And given that I do this for a living, reading through this, when I see setback shed, and then I see setback parking, and then if I refer back to the area in 10-18-4, F1, under interim uses, which includes the accessory, I, I think that's where this is, I'm sorry, on your page six? Am I missing?
Under, oh, 10-8-4 interim uses, yep.
Yep, yep.
Yep, at the very bottom of the page here and top of the next.
Yeah, and I think that's the next page.
Okay.
Page, you're page six, this is three.
Yeah, and then at the very top, I think it continues on, "Within any R3D manufactured housing district, no structure or land shall be used for the following uses."
I'm sorry, no, this, I'm sorry, I'm referring to the F1 where it talks about accessory structures, detached and buildings. I'm sorry, it's okay.
Okay.
I'm, I might have missed, yeah, I might have missed a page in printing this, too. Yeah, 10-7-4 accessory structures. I guess what I keep coming back to is, you know, this talks about accessory structures, detached garages and buildings in the R3D are exempt from this standard and subject to this requirement. And when I read this, to me, it sort of tells me that accessory structures, detached garages and buildings, they're exempt from this, but we'll have to go to R3D in 10-18-6B to find that stuff.
Yes.
And then when we go there, we don't find accessory structures or detached garages or buildings. We find that we're allowed one carport and one shed.
There are existing buildings out there that were approved as part of the conditional use permit.
Okay.
So this is trying to address those as well.
Okay.
Because they're already approved, but.
Okay, that makes sense.
This ordinance is set up for the future, you know, development.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense then.
That helps.
Okay. Then if we can go back to the chart in 10-18-5.
So Commissioner Benkey then, because it's not listed, so we just have a chart, so we have setback parking.
Correct.
Not setback carport.
Parking, carport, that's where I'm going with that exactly, is that, you know, this is basically saying that the car can be right against the back of the curb and so can the carport.
Yes.
And, you know, there again, we have the accessory structure, we have, which, I'm sorry, we, we specifically went to performance standards for manufactured home parks. Each manufactured home may have one carport and one shed, but this only talks about the shed specifically. So the parking, so we're basically saying that the parking and the carport are one and the same thing, it's just one's covered.
Yes, because the carport's going to be over the parking.
And is that defined like that in the, in the?
It's just the way it is. I mean, based on the, based on the code.
Right.
For what you can have and the separation requirements, that's all you can do.
Right.
Is what we've.
But then I guess the example that Mary Jo brought up, where there's a sidewalk, now we have a little bit of an issue with the zero setback again, too, so we might have to.
We can add to that.
Tweak that, yeah.
Yep, as a, include the sidewalk or, yep.
Okay, well, I think then really what I'm down to is the issue of overhang on structure.
And we can certainly add that language.
And, and Ms. Garros, how will you add that, since this is kind of a chart?
What we will do is we will add a provision, and I don't know specifically where. I need to look at the whole ordinance to make sure that we're consistent throughout, but.
Right.
We can add language in terms of the carports that they be setback to either from the sidewalk or the street, whichever is closer. We can also put in language, and I think this would be, I'm not sure if it would, I don't know if it'd be under this or the general provisions, that the, you can't encroach having any type of.
Zero overhang?
Yes, within, or over the street or sidewalk.
There's a definition in yards that talks about eaves.
Yes.
And I think we have to refer back to that, see what that allows.
Yes.
And see what we would have to take back out of there.
Exactly.
So, I mean, this isn't a yard.
I just don't know which specific provision it is, but yes.
Yeah, I wish I could pull it up right now, but I.
It's in the general provisions, so.
Right.
We've, we've published that we're dealing with general provisions in the zoning ordinance, so we can, we can cover that. I just can't tell you where exactly would it be and what the exact citation would be tonight.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be in the chart.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Benkey, we're trying to get away from someone putting a carport at a zero setback and having a two-foot overhang into the street, which could cause problems with fire trucks or other issues.
Absolutely.
As we, as we narrow the street. We're just looking for, with a zero setback, that it, that we are narrowing the, to a zero overhang at the same time.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Correct, Ms. Garros?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. With, with that being said, any other questions with those changes, Commissioner Singh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, I have one question. The shed and/or the carport, these are standalone structures.
Yes.
Nowhere here is it said that your shed cannot be attached to the, to the home.
That's in the manufactured housing code.
Likewise, the carport?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, okay. Commissioners, it seems like we have agreement this evening with the stated changes that Commissioner Benkey had brought up. With that being said, unless there's other discussion, I would stand for a motion. Mr. Benkey, Commissioner Benkey, sorry.
I would move that the planning commission recommend to city council approval, approval of this proposed ordinance as drafted, with my addition commenting on the issue of the zero setback and carport roof overhangs. And leave it to staff to, to find the appropriate spot for that element.
Yes.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Singh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. This will go to the city council on September 20th. Thanks for those of you that attended this evening for our meeting, we don't always get a lot of visitors. Thank you. Our next item this evening is also a public hearing. It is a public hearing, it's an application for ShowQuest Properties LLC for rezoning from general purpose planned unit development, B3/ PUD to B3 general business, PUD amendment to remove .11 acres from the existing PUD preliminary and final plat of the two-lot commercial subdivision of Burnhaven Third Edition, conditional use permit amendment to increase the size of a car wash to allow them, and also to allow more than 25% metal exterior materials to be installed on the maintenance center building at 14800 Burnhaven Drive. I do think, Ms. Garros, you were testing me as to what was all going to be in the, in the item.
Yes, there are a lot of land use clearances that are needed to accommodate a really pretty simple development application.
Thank you, Ms. Garros, you have the floor.
The, the subject site is located on Burnhaven Drive. The parcel where the current car wash sits, and also where the service building that we refer to throughout the report sits, is the southernmost property on the graph here, and it is zoned B3 general business. The applicant owns this property and the lot to the north, and actually the outlot even north of that, so all the way down to South Cross Drive and Burnhaven Drive. The lot to the north of the subject site is involved in this application because they're looking at basically swapping about a little over 4100 or 4900 square feet of land from the lot to the north to the lot to the south, so that they can build an addition to the car wash, a one-stall addition to the car wash. The lot to the north, however, is zoned B3 planned unit development. So because of that, all of the land therein is subject to the 2010 planned unit development agreement that was processed for that lot, and that allowed a car lot, car storage lot to be built without a principal building on the building, excuse me, on the lot. So getting a little bit closer with the pictometry, all of the work, for the most part, is related to the 14800 parcel to the south. On this, you can see the car wash, although it's fairly small, this is the car wash here. The car wash is about 12 feet from this common north property line. So in order to add on to that, basically doubling the size, they want to add one more car wash bay to the existing car wash bay, they are looking at modifying this common lot line, basically pushing it out and taking the acreage that. the acreage that they need to accommodate the setbacks and the location for the carport addition, all on the southerly parcel. So in order to do that, we need to rezone, change PUDs, replat land, and, and then do the actual conditional use permit. So, this is really what we're looking at for the application. This is the, this shows both lots, this is the northerly lot, the southerly lot. The main thing that is causing all these land use clearances that need to be resolved is the addition of this little piece here, which is again, the addition of another single car wash bay, pretty much just like what is existing there now. In addition to that, they have requested a, an amendment to the conditional use permit for this lot to the south to allow more than 25% of the east exterior or the east facade of the building to have metal panels. Both of these, the car wash addition and the use of metal panels in excess of 25% of the, any side of a building do require either the processing of a conditional use permit or planned unit development. Putting up the preliminary plat, basically because I think this shows really what we're dealing with. We've got this small area of land shown in yellow, this is what's needed so that they can add on, still meet the setbacks, and be able to add on to their garage. So what we need to do is to take this small area out of the planned unit development, and then this area will be swapped, if you will, and added to the lot to the south. So, we're looking then to not only remove that square footage from the PUD for the lot to the north, but also to rezone that from B3 PUD to just straight B3, so it'll be consistent with the entire south lot. This is really just a blow-up of the last plan that I had, shows the car wash addition. The real work that is proposed to take place is there is this existing island, parking island here, that straddles the common lot line. So what they're proposing to do is they will be removing several parking spaces from both the north and the south side, so that they can build on the addition and provide the drive lane needed and the stacking distance needed, so that cars can maneuver through this, this addition. They are proposing some minor landscaping changes in this area of the site, basically three shrubs and a, and a tree. All of the other landscaping will remain in place and is not proposed to be relocated. Part of what is happening on this site is that there is a, a large addition on the south side of the building that's being constructed, they've received a building permit for that, and the reason that this is underway is that this is for all auto repair, the entire building is auto repair, which is a permitted use in the district, so they did not need to have any land use clearance for that addition. The car wash, a detached car wash, is different. That needs a conditional use permit, and they are expanding, staff has the ability to approve minor changes to buildings with PUDs and with a conditional use permit, as long as they don't exceed 10% of the building area of the building. This one is doubling the size, so we're past that 10%, and that bumps it to the point where we need to come to planning commission and council to approve a conditional use permit to allow for that expansion. The proposal then is really to take the east front facade of this building and to modify it using ACM metal panels in a silver tone and red tone, so that this will have a very similar finish and look as the Burnsville Toyota dealership building, which is across Burnhaven Drive to the east. In addition to that, they're showing the addition of the car wash. Again, we have an existing, basically an existing door here, an existing overhead door, they will be adding on this section here. The proposed material is the aggregate, exposed aggregate material, the same thing that, that the structure is composed of right now. We do have the elevation drawings that we provided with the packet that show the materials and what's proposed. And on this side, on the left, this is the proposal for the addition. We'll have an overhead door proposed on both the east and the west sides, pretty much exactly the same as the existing structure. In addition to that, they will have a double door in through here, so there is an area to walk inside the building from the east side to the west side or the rear. And this graphic is showing the floor plan, you have the existing building with their one bay car wash here, this is the proposed car wash, and then this is the area that's open to the doors to get through from one side to the other. We talked about the landscaping, nothing is proposed to change on the site with this particular project. We're adding, they are adding some shrubs and a tree here in this location, just to the north. The plan, when you take a look at it, shows a lot more going on, and the other improvements are really associated with what they needed to do for the addition to the service building. They were taking out landscaping to make room for the addition to that building, so they needed to relocate that elsewhere on the site. So when you take a close look at the plan and you see these various planting materials, that's what the majority of this is based on. But really, the only thing for the conditional use permit and our project that we're reviewing tonight is just in this area, just north of the car wash. For their signage, we have reviewed the plans and all of their signage that is proposed for the building does comply with the ordinance in terms of the size, the individual channel letters, and the, and the lighting that is proposed. With the preliminary plat, again, primarily the only thing that's changing here is this little part of this property line. And they're basically showing just a small part of that being bumped out, swapping the land, so that they can expand the car wash. The, both lots are currently platted, and the replat basically allows for the addition to occur. Along with that, they are going to need to vacate existing drainage and utilities, mostly along the south line of Lot 1. That public hearing will take place before the city council, and the, one of the conditions that we are proposing for this application is that the preliminary and final plat be subject to approval of the vacation of the drainage and utility easements. Otherwise, nothing else is changing on the site. We've got the existing parking lot, there is a stormwater pond existing here, we've got the existing parking lot, existing building, there is an existing stormwater pond here. The limits of the grading are really just what's involved for the addition of the car wash. The final plat is consistent with what's shown for the preliminary plat, they do meet all the lot size, lot width, and other standards, and they are rededicating the necessary drainage and utility easements on the plat, so the city engineer is satisfied with the application. With that, our recommendation from staff is to approve the rezoning, to approve the PUD amendment, and again, that's basically just to remove that small area of land from the PUD, so that we've got zoning district boundaries that are consistent with the boundaries of the new lots to be created. The preliminary and final plat are proposed also to be approved, and that would be for two commercial lots. The conditional use permit amendment is recommended for approval, and that's to, actually, this is incorrect, this is 10%, it should be 25%, to allow more than 25% of that east front facade of the service center building to be in metal panels, and then also to approve the expansion of the car wash. The conditions that are recommended with that are identified, and there are six conditions. One, that all the provisions from the previously approved conditional use permits will remain in full force and effect. Some of those of note for the planning commission and for the public are that the car wash can only be used by employees of Toyota and people who purchase their vehicles from Toyota, so it's not a car wash that's open to the general public. The, there is also a condition that the car wash is limited to being open during the hours of operation of the service center, that's under a separate PUD, but that does apply, does apply in this case as well, because we are saying that those remain in full force and effect, actually, I'm sorry, that was from an earlier conditional use permit. Another condition is that they provide recording or documentation that their cross access and parking easements between both properties in the event that in the future, one of the lots is sold to someone separate, so that they can continue the cross access. Number three, we don't, there's not much rooftop equipment that's proposed for the car wash, I believe it's really just a vent, and if that is visible from the property lines, it will need to be painted color to complement the building color. Number four, that a sign permit will need to be obtained before they can install any exterior signage. Number five, the preliminary and final plat are subject to vacation of the drainage and utility easements. And then number six, that evidence that the final plat has been recorded will need to be submitted before a building permit will be issued for the, the expansion of the car wash. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. I, I just have, for a point of clarification, on the, the utility easements, you discussed we were going to abandon them, but really removing them for more, they're, they're then granting more land on the middle lot to, for additional easements to account for this change?
Yes, we need to vacate, when the north lot was planted, that was planted more recently, I believe in 2010, there was a five-foot drainage and utility easement along the south lot line, so that exists along that lot line and needs to be vacated or given up, so that there will not be an easement, the, the car wash couldn't be expanded, you can't build over an easement. So what they're proposing to do is to vacate the drainage and utility easements, that can be done through a public hearing before the city council. And for all easements, the city, easements in right-of-way, the city can hold a public hearing because the city is a spokesperson, if you will, for these public easements in right-of-way. And if there's not a future need or anticipated future need for that land to remain under the public domain, if you will, the city can approve what's called a vacation, and that then gives up the easement. What will happen here, however, because of the condition, is they will need to plat new drainage and utility easements along that new common lot line and within the entire plat, actually. And they are showing what is proposed is consistent with what the subdivision ordinance requires, and the city engineer has accepted.
Okay. And I truly, I realize none of that we're acting on, so, but that, you're just giving us a background that we're taking the easement from one and actually moving it to the other. Because I remember when this was all done, when the, when it was purchased and the lot was added and the stormwater ponds were put in, I know there's a fair amount of easements in the area to make the whole stormwater system work that we have at Five and.
Yes.
Or at Burnhaven and South Cross. Thank you, so, commissioners, questions? Commissioner Levy?
I'm not clear on the, the proposed addition, which is under construction, yet we're doing something with the front, the, the front facade of it? How did they get the permit to do the construction if the front part hadn't already been taken care of?
The permit is, does have approved materials, they are different than what's being proposed.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, what the applicant would like to do, and they wanted to do this to begin with, but did not want to go through the process to, to do it. So, we approved the building permit based on materials that meet the ordinance today.
Okay.
They would like approval, conditional use permit approval, to use the metal panel materials.
Thank you.
And also, the existing Burnsville Toyota dealership did receive PUD approval in the past to use the same metal panel materials.
It's really no different than the panels they put on Nissan, on Honda.
Correct.
It's the new look.
The stuff we, the stuff we approved for Hyundai and we, also Mazda, so really, we've, it's been in front of us several times.
How are we going to tell the difference between with these dealerships?
Maybe we can, maybe we can work, maybe we can work this into some sort of change, so this doesn't come in front of us again, so in a future work plan. Commissioner Levy, other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, other questions?
Sure.
Commissioner Benke?
Thank you.
I would have been shocked if you did not have a question.
It has happened though. Just curious, was there an attempt to bring all three parcels into the PUD as opposed to doing this sort of backward, to me, method?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that we had suggested as, you know, options to just combine everything into one lot.
Right.
They chose not to do that, and I don't know if they've got other plans for how, you know, how those properties could be developed in the future, but it was their choice not to do that.
Because it does create a bit of an awkward spot, and I realize it's their awkward spot, but awkward spots from landowners tend to come back here for us to see. Would it have made any difference if the car wash was attached versus detached to the building?
Yes, if, for an attached car wash, that is a, an approved accessory, let's see, how the, which one is that? You can attach the car wash, it's considered an accessory use, but a detached car wash is a conditional use.
Okay. And one other one. You talked, in our recommendations, you talked a little bit about the evidence, number two, the evidence of recording from Dakota County for cross access and parking easements, et cetera. I thought I heard you say something about if they chose to sell a lot, and I wondered if I heard that wrong, or if you could elaborate on that some more.
Certainly, well, their, their plans show common use of those.
Sure.
So, it's really a standard of ours to have them submit their cross access agreements for that, and that's specifically what it's for, I mean, everything is fine if you have one owner, if you sell it at some point in the future and don't have those agreements, then it becomes difficult, so we're requesting that they just provide that updated information to us. It will most likely need to be updated based on the new legal descriptions.
Right. Okay, and then, just sort of touch on the last thing, I think, we've done a lot of interuse permits, this is not an interuse permit for that parking lot, it's a, it's a planned unit development.
Yes.
Did that stem from the car dealership that was proposed in that area, or was that from some other?
No, that, this was actually separate, there was a CarMax.
Right.
Dealer, or CarMax that was proposed for the, I don't have it on here.
For the entire, the, the two.
At the corner here.
Right.
Both properties.
And then later, the applicant purchased all of the properties, and they had, they wanted to do the car inventory or car parking. There were agreements, although I'm, I don't know the specifics of it, but there were agreements that called for, the applicant, I believe, agreed to build a larger stormwater pond, or perhaps the city did, and they granted the easements, but more of a regional stormwater pond. And then the PUD, though, was just over this northern lot, and that was to allow the parking lot to be installed without a principal building, but the condition is, they need to build a principal building on that lot by the year 2020, or combine both of these lots into one lot.
Both of the lots, you mean, the one at South Cross and Burnhaven and the first, and the north hatch lot?
Just these, just these two hatch lots.
Okay, so these two. Okay, so these two have to either be combined, okay, which is what we.
Or a separate building needs to be constructed on by 2020.
Which is, again, what we talked about earlier, but as one big PUD, but not, not happening yet.
That same, very similar language was done for the subject site when that was originally approved. It was approved as a multi-phased project, and they needed to come in with a building by a certain date, and, and they did do that.
Sure.
Yeah, the similar type of development phasing.
I, okay, I'm still thinking it's awkward, but, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioners, other comments? Hearing none, this does, this does require a public hearing. At this point, I will open the public hearing in reference to this item and ask anyone in the audience this evening that would like to come up and speak to this item. Please come to the podium and, and give us your name and address for the record. Welcome. Thanks for coming this evening.
My name is Jim Albrecht. I and my wife Evelyn, who is here this evening, also reside at 14721 Courtyard Circle. On the first slide that she was showing, you can see where our lot is located. We have no great problem with anything that is being proposed except for noise. When we sit outside or we have our windows open, oftentimes we can hear the car wash operating, particularly, I think what it is, is when they turn the blower on to dry the cars. And this goes on almost all day long. I don't know what it's going to be like with a second car wash there. What I would suggest and propose to you is that you add something to the conditional use pro, permit that will somehow or another restrict the noise that goes out of that place. Preferably, we would like to see the car wash is turned around so that the blower is blowing out towards the street and not back over to the residential area where we have 20-some residences right there. What you can do for that, we would appreciate, but I don't know, it's an awful noise at times when it starts at early in the morning and goes until what we consider late at night. We would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Rita Knudsen. My address is 14718 Courtyard Circle. I happen to be a neighbor of the Jim Albrecht that was just up here. I just have a question and I'm looking for some clarification. I think I had heard the comment that the car wash is only available to Toyota employees and those customers that have purchased from Toyota?
Yes.
I, I have a concern over that because I'm, I don't know that that's correct. I just had my car washed up there, and there is a machine there that you can put money in. It does not require a token, and you can actually feed the dollar bills in. So I would just ask that that be clarified, because if it is open to the general public, obviously you're going to have more than just Toyota employees and Toyota customers using it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be a violation of their conditional use permit, because it was specific, specific conditions when this was approved.
And actually, in all the ones we've approved, all of them, I think they've all been limited to the actual franchisee and the cars that are associated.
My name is Darryl Anwood. I live at 14725 Courtyard Circle. I want to kind of take a little bypass on the noise situation that comes from the car wash and alter, it complains about the car transports that are coming in at hours of the night, and especially around midnight, when they have diesels, which they leave the trucks running. And it takes within an hour or so to unload the cars. And I don't know if this should be discussed with you or with the city council.
We'd have to look at the original planned unit development for the property, because I know some of the stuff we did for Honda and some other places, there was limits as to when cars could be unloaded.
This doesn't have a PUD.
No. The actual, it does not, okay. The empty lot does, okay.
Such as a noise ordinance or a delivery ordinance on hours on the books.
I know we talked somewhat of, I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, that's it.
I know we talked a little bit about that with.
Honda, didn't we?
And, and down, also down by Dodger Burnsville was.
Luther, Luther owns the, or, Subaru.
Subaru, that there were hours of operation. And we don't know if there are here or not in terms of unloading.
I don't believe that there are for this north lot. There are hours of operation that were indicated for this when the service building was approved. I think from seven or eight in the morning until 10 at night. I don't believe, I can go back and research that for you, but I don't believe there were any such conditions for this 2010 PUD.
Okay, and for clarity, I guess, we have two parcels here, and one does have PUD, but the other one does not. So I guess the question would be, are they using the north lot to unload?
They have approval for the north lot to use it as a vehicle storage lot.
Right.
Like I say, unless there were special conditions in that 2010 PUD, which I don't believe there are. The only time limits that I'm familiar with were when the conditional use permit for the southerly service building. Because at the time that the service building was constructed, it also included a dealership, and it was kind of an interim thing until the actual dealership building could be remodeled. But now it's been changed to all service, but those hours of operation still apply to this southern building.
Ma'am, do you?
Yes, one other.
Can, if you could, I need to have you step up to the podium so they can catch you on camera and catch what you're saying. Thank you.
About, about two years ago, when Chris was the, on the planning commission, I called him with a similar complaint. And he returned my call and gave me information on two of those areas I just inquired about, the noise and the delivery. And he recommended that I keep a diary of dates and times when the different cars were being unloaded, so.
Ma'am, do you know, were they at the lot that was closer to you in your, your project? It's the north one?
Yes, the, the lot that backs up to our houses.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. And we're not really addressing that PUD at all, correct?
Correct.
All we're doing is taking land from it.
Well, they're asking us to allow them to take land from it so that they can build their car wash.
Okay. Any, anyone else that would like to speak, please come up and, and at some point, we'll have the applicant come up after we have the public hearing?
I represent.
Okay, thank you. Please come up and give us your name.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, sir, there's an individual right behind you.
Hi, I'm Gary Arso, I'm at 900 Crystal Lake Road West, I'm on the other side. One, I, they've been a pretty good neighbor, I don't really complain, other than a little bit of noise in the hours of operation. And we're a little bit, on our side, the neighborhood didn't get notice of the first go-around with the, with the upgrade of the building. We're, we'd like to have a little insight into that, because the, you know, getting the original building built was kind of painstaking and some issues with that, but we would like to heard, you know, what was going on, how much traffic was going to be there. The noise issue is, I mean, they get deliveries six days a week at about 1:00 in the morning. The maintenance facility is open essentially 24 hours a day. So there's, and there's some things on the, on your website about the, the use of that area. It is 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM is, that's all they're supposed to be able to deliver items into the facility. And the other piece in here is, they're only supposed to have a single bay for the car wash. It's all it's supposed to be allowed as an accessory. So that should be something that's also being considered as a, as a change to your little plan, but, so I'm just worried about the hours of operation and make sure that it's within the limits of what we need and keeping the noise down from all of their operations that are going on, because we are real close. We're going to be really close now with the extra billing they have in, and I know these folks are getting the noise and the other things. So that's, that's my concern, and we should, you know, you put some stipulation of the hours of op, operation and noise, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, you have the floor.
Shall we invite the?
No, I will.
Okay.
Commissioner Levy?
This noise issue disturbs me, in the hours of operation. It sounds like they're using the north section to kind of bypass the conditions on the south section. If I understand, what we're being requested to do in terms of changing the boundary between the two sections, and that affects the PUD, can we add to the PUD the same noise requirements that are in the non-PUD part, the B3 part?
Well, we can question that, we'll put that on the table. Commissioner Levy, other questions?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions?
Do we?
Commissioner Workman.
Do we have any, is it possible to reverse the car wash, like, one of our citizens?
Well, we can, we can, we can get to the applicant at that point. Any other questions before I invite the applicant up to speak to us? Other questions of staff? Okay. Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Darwin Lindahl, Darwin Lindahl Architects, 4124 Quebec Avenue North, Minneapolis. Unfortunately, the applicant had a prior commitment this evening, so he's not able to, to attend. I think with everything that's involved in this application, Commander Stafford did a good job of dissecting everything, and been a pleasure working with on, on this application. A couple of things, without the applicant being here, I really don't have any response regarding hours of operation. I'm the architect involved in the projects and not really familiar with all the operations and, and the activities that, that go on on the site on a daily basis. I guess what I would like to, you know, address the issue from the standpoint of the CUP amendment, what has to do with the, the front of the building, and I think that's probably something that everybody can agree upon, that it is the Toyota's national image, US, what they call US2 image, which they put on the front of the sales building, and now would like to have the opportunity of, of tying the two together on, on the service facility.
So, sir, do, I, real quick, unless I misunderstood the commissions, I don't think we have any issues over the piece of the 25%, and I think that's fine.
Okay, okay.
So we don't have to spend any time on that.
Okay, I just wanted to just recap some of the points on there. And then it has to do with the, the rezoning, I'm not keeping that, rezoning, but replating. That was something that we did. We have looked at numerous options as far as where to put an additional wash bay. One was actually freestanding, and I think we sent that to the staff, and basically that would be an additional accessory building, which was, would not be permitted. And because of everything that's happening on the north side of the existing service facility, there wasn't enough room between that, the, the main facility and the existing car wash, to add another car wash or put it up onto the existing building, next to the existing building. So talking with staff, this option seemed to be the most viable for meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance, as well as from the staff or from the owner's standpoint. And so subsequently, we had to replat or to make this, this work. And regarding the, then, probably the, a couple of things with the applications regarding the, the joint access agreement. I guess what I would like to propose is that we have, rather than a, an easement, because there's different, there's some ramifications whether it's an easement than an agreement. Because if you look on the site plan, if the owner, which I don't anticipate him ever wanting to sell the properties, separate them, the, the two lots can function by themselves without having those common access. It's more of a convenience for the owner owning both of those lots. So I would recommend or suggest or ask that it be as, if it want to be a recorded agreement, but not necessarily an easement. Regarding the noise.
Can we, real quick, Deb, I want to clarify what you just said. There, we were talking about utility easements.
No, this is cross-access.
The cross-access.
Yes.
And typically, that's just a written agreement between two property owners that says, property owner A has access to drive on property owner B's property.
Yes. It can be in either form, and from a staff perspective, it doesn't matter to us.
You don't care?
No.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Regarding the utility and drainage easements, that's not any issue, it's just basically we're, you know, we go through the vacation, everything, it's just a matter of just realigning the current easements to align with the, the new property line configuration. So there's really no issue there. I think probably the biggest issue that, here tonight, has, has come up with the, the people in the neighborhood is, is the noise with the car wash. And I guess, I don't know, Deb, maybe you can address, is there, does the city have a zoning or, a noise ordinance from the standpoint of the number of decibels that are able to go across property lines?
Yes, we do. It's the state Minnesota Pollution Control Agency standard of 65 decibels.
Okay. So what I would recommend is that if you wanted to put something in there from the standpoint of having, meeting those requirements, and I know the, the car wash equipment manufacturer, they can provide documentation as far as from basically, you know, one, what noise is exiting the, the building to a certain distance away. And if there's going to be an issue with that, I mean, if it can't meet, you know, meet those requirements, that we would propose doing screening, that would be acceptable to the city, that'd be, you know, putting additional, you know, conifer trees, evergreens, or even maybe, maybe even a sound wall. I think from the standpoint of relocating or the configuration, as far as how you approach the car wash is, is problematic, just from, from standpoint of, of the customers. You're making them queue up on the backside versus on the front side. And I think because of the way it operates right now, everybody tends to bring, come into the, the main entrance of the, the service facility, and, and they can go into the service facility, and making them go around, I think, is going to be a problem because you're having cross-traffic. So I would say that it would not recommend that, but I think probably if we looked at the Minnesota Pollution Control and addressing it that way would probably be a better way of, of handling that. Are there any other questions that you, the council may have?
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Lindahl, for the information. I think one thing that would help with the sound is eliminating the public use of the car wash.
Yeah.
Since that was probably not part of the original.
I'm glad you brought that up. I wanted to address that, that item as well. It is not the, because of the way the car washes are operated with. It is not the, because of the way the car washes are operated with coins, tokens, they're always, even if they're, if you want to say exclusive use only to customers, you can always upgrade, they'll, they'll give you a basic wash, and then a customer can choose if they wants to upgrade the, the wash. It's hard to police, you'd almost have, to have somebody there that is going to try to come in and do it. It's not advertised from the, the dealership as open to the public. So I guess if you've got any suggestions on, on how they, you know, can control that.
Well, I'm not going to tell you how to run your business, but a, you know, like a voucher system, I think, would fix that fairly quickly, since it does go against the original PUD that was not intended to be used for the general public.
Sir, I would tell you, the other car dealerships in the area have a simple sign they dropped that says the car wash is closed. It's just a simple, if you go to any of the walls or, or the other dealerships, the car washes, there's just a little sign that sits in front of the door that says it's closed.
Is that during their business hours?
No, when it's closed.
Okay. Well, I, I believe that, that car wash is closed when the facility is closed. I would have to verify that, but obviously, that's part of the.
We're hearing, hearing something different from the.
But the, the PUD states that it shouldn't be operated when the business is not up.
Yeah. And I don't know if anybody has contacted, you know, the, the city and consequently then to, to the owner, but that's something that obviously would have to be addressed.
Okay. Commissioner Workman, other questions?
No, that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioners, other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Benke.
Mr. Lindahl, I, I'm looking at the flow that you pointed out, and, you know, currently you've got it laid out with the cars entering from the front.
Correct.
And there was actually that, okay, that's better, thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Sorry, did I change that?
Thank you, Deb.
Let me help you more.
Yeah. You, you pointed out that it was hard to get the flow to turn around, yet I'm just curious, where do you see the cars exiting the car wash in the site in the situation now?
Well, where they are is, where they exiting, typically, they can go either, because of the turn is so hard, what they would do is they would actually exit and go around the building, or else they would go out on that north lot.
Right, which, it's actually, again, just about as awkward as trying to turn the traffic around and bring it through the other way. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. All right, Commissioners, your pleasure. I'll go around the room and we'll discuss. Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, listening to the residents that live nearby, they have raised some issues that are very important. We just talked about one, opening that car wash to the public. Of course, I guess that Ms. Garros, the department will be handling that, because. Number two, the noise for unloading, I think we can take care of that to Mr. Chair, if we, like we did to the other dealerships, limit the unloading to a certain reasonable time, not midnight and one o'clock in the morning. I would like us to address that. I think those are the two that I think that are very important. The applicant is not here to address some of these issues. I, I don't know if we want to move ahead with this application in, in the applicant's absence and, and make a recommendation to the city council. Personally, I would like the applicant to address some of these issues, and to do that, we put it for our next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Garros, first of all, I guess I've got a couple of questions about Commissioner Singh's request and how we best word and how we would do that, okay? And to Commissioner Singh's question, I guess, if we were going to move this forward, if we make a change, if the applicant wants to attend a city council meeting, they have the opportunity to speak to the city council, correct?
They do, but for the commissioners, you know, if you're not satisfied at the answers and they can't be provided because, you know, the owner isn't here, it's perfectly legitimate to continue this, so that you get the information that you're looking for. And we can further investigate what exactly the conditions are for that north lot and advise you accordingly. What I would say for all of the property owners is if you do have issues with noise that are after the city hall closes at 4:30, to contact the police department, and they will go out and they will actually identify, you know, what is occurring, and there will be a, you know, a ticket or information on what is going on, and then we can continue to use that through code enforcement. So definitely, that, that's an option. During the day, from 8:00 to 4:30, we do have staff that can go out and, and investigate, but we do encourage the, and the police are fully aware of that, and, and they do that to assist for the residential neighborhoods. But I think because the owner isn't here and we just can't answer some of these questions in operational, I, I would concur that it would be best to continue this, so they can come back with that information.
Hang on, just one second, hang on just a second. Commissioners, other?
I agree with.
Well, hang on just a second.
Commissioner Singh, I'd like to see this moved to another meeting, so we can get more information on this, and so we can have the applicant here to address these issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioner Benke.
Deb, to Commissioner Singh's points, we don't even know if we can modify the PUD requirements, because that piece is not part of this.
Correct.
Well, actually it is.
And that was my question.
Actually, it is, because we are amending the PUD.
That's right.
Yes.
That's right, we are amending the PUD. So it's, it's, it's up for discussion.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Benke, other questions?
Not at this time, because the applicant isn't here.
Commissioner Levy.
I'm, I'm total concurrence with what we've just said.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would, I would agree as well. I think those noise issues are very legitimate and need to be further explored.
Okay. Once you, the applicant come back up to the.
If your decision is to, to table this application, what I would ask is, would it be possible of having, recommending the amendment to the conditional use permit regarding the fascia, since there's no question on that regarding at all, just from standpoint of construction and, and sequencing and so forth? That is something that we need to have a decision so that we know which direction to go. This is on the front of the existing or of the service facility. Sounds like to your questions that have, are more related to the car wash and what's happening on the, on the north lot, which is actually brought into the car wash issue because of the replating and realignment of that property line. So I guess that would just be a question of if, if you are going to table, I would request that the, if you don't have an issue with the PUD on the front, that that be approved.
Deb, I don't know how we, how we handle that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the application is all tied together.
Right.
So I believe it would be, we're looking at a continuation of two weeks, so that would bring, bring everything back to the planning commission at their September 26th meeting.
At this point, how the application was put together, we either act on it or we don't, we can't, we, we can't separate, you know, it would have been, if it was two separate applications, if it was the variance on the front of the building and then the, the car washes, we certainly could have done that, but at this point, it's, it's all tied together in one application. Commissioners, other questions? Otherwise, I would stand for a motion. Commissioner Singh.
Mr. Chair, I, I would, I move that the planning commission recommended it. The planning commission recommendation is to table this application for the next meeting of the planning commission on September 26th.
I have a motion on the floor. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. Deb, you have other questions of the commissioners? Do you feel like you've got all your questions answered, given what Commissioner Singh stated?
Yes, I think that we've got, I can put together a specific list of the type of information that we're looking for from the applicant, so that they can get it back to us shortly.
Because I, I just, I think I want to make sure we're looking at what changes can be made to the PUD in the north lot.
Yes.
And what's in there from a restriction on the southern lot today, so maybe it's not a change, it's just a code enforcement, correct?
Correct.
I think those are the, that kind of summarize, and then I, you know, I, I do believe that the, the noise, I mean, the applicant did say that, you know, we've got state statute about noise, and, you know, if the testing is below that, we don't have a lot of room to stand on, but if the testing is above that, then we have another direction to go.
We do have, because it is a conditional use permit and PUD, nobody wants to live with 65 decibels going on that may be acceptable to PCA, but at all hours, you know, of the day and night, I think that's why there were limitations that were put on this in the first place, and if those aren't being followed, you know, that is a code enforcement issue, but we really should have the, you know, the, the owner should be here so that they can address some of these questions.
Would we be able to have those original conditions for the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
They aren't, they aren't in here, correct?
Correct.
I didn't think I saw them, okay. From the original, that was back in 2002, when the original building was built, I think?
2003, I think.
Okay.
But they, yeah, it goes, it goes back, it's, it's.
It goes back about 13 years.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we have dealt with this owner before, he's been, I mean, very cooperative in the past, and I have no reservation that if we have him here, you know, things are going to work out, so I.
And that would also allow the applicant to propose, you know, what, what they can do to help resolve the sound issues. You know, apparently, with him not here, nobody's real comfortable with that, so.
Agreed.
And then you have the opportunity to review that and make your recommendations based on that known information.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely.
Okay. That brings us to item, the last item on our agenda this evening, and that's updates. And Ms. Garros, I will start with you. Do I have, should I hand this out?
Sure.
There, I messed up the camera guy, slid completely out of the camera. I'm going to get chastised later.
This is the draft agenda for the next meeting, which will be changed to add this item, that'll be continued. But in addition to that, I want to make sure that all the commissioners are aware, tomorrow night, the city council will have their work session, starting at 6:30 here, and some of the topics that they will be reviewing that will be of interest to the commissioners, they're going to be looking at the architectural review tool. That's something that was put together a year, two years ago, and we've been implementing. And there, when that first went into effect, the council asked to come back and see how it was going, if there needed to be, you know, changes or whatnot, so that discussion is going to occur with the council tomorrow night. In addition to that, another part of that, that's not necessarily the architectural review tool, but a component that kind of goes along with it is, the ordinance has standards for compatibility, especially when you're looking at multi-tenant buildings. Planning commission has reviewed them in terms of the Betupur into Palace project, the Aldi project, there have been a few. So staff was trying to find out from the council if there's an interest in looking at changing the ordinance or just getting clarification so that staff is on the same page with, with council as to what they want to see in the ordinance. So both of those will be discussed. In addition to that, there will be an update on the bus rapid transit, the Orange Line project, that's been in the news for various things, so Regina will be making a presentation on that. So want you all to know that you're all invited to come and to participate in that work session.
6:30?
6:30, yep, in the council chambers here. And it's more of a, it's a work session, so it's not as, as formal. In addition to that, next week on Monday, we've got our second comprehensive plan meeting, and that is at the maintenance center, starting at 6:00. And the primary discussion is going to be around the study areas, land use study areas like the Minnesota River Quadrant, or older industrial zone north of Highway 13 and some of the other areas of the city, so looking forward to that to be quite a good meeting.
I've never gone to the maintenance center, how does one get in there?
We'll get you taken care of.
All right.
The, the consultant that's working with us was out in full force at the fire muster and getting feedback for the whole weekend, so I, I do think they got some good information. Commissioners, other updates? None? With none, I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I have a motion for adjournment by Commissioner Singh and seconded by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay, and the motion carries. Have a safe, and have a safe evening and safe drive home. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.